Welcome to the January 10, 2023 City Council Meeting. Please stand for an invocation by Councilman Wilder, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank Lynchburg City Council for the work we're doing in our community. We thank you for our staff and our partners and our citizens. We thank you for the hard work to do to make our city run and to be efficient and effective. We thank you for all our leaders in our community. We thank you for working together as a unit that makes it better for our citizens. Continue to give us strength, continue to give us guidance in your precious name. We pray, amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without individual liberty and justice for all.
We have a few recognitions on tonight's agenda. The first is for Lynchburg Fire Department Captain Jennifer Collins. Ms. Collins, can you come forward, please? Captain Collins. Tonight, we are proud to recognize the Lynchburg Fire Department's Health and Safety Captain, Jennifer Collins. Captain Collins was recently recognized as the winner of the 2022 Governor's EMS Award for Outstanding Contribution to EMS Health and Safety. The award was presented during the annual Virginia EMS Symposium held in Norfolk last month. In nominating Captain Collins for the award, former Deputy Chief Robert Lipscomb described Captain Collins as "a dedicated public servant who has distinguished herself in the area of provider health and safety." She has helped to develop and manage a number of initiatives that address both the physical and mental health needs of the members of the Lynchburg Fire Department. These programs include the Firefighter Occupational Risk Management Athletic Training, or FOMAT, program, which emphasizes the importance of maintaining the physical health of the city's fire department force. Additionally, Captain Collins has continued to develop the department's peer support and chaplain programs. Together, these initiatives have had a significant positive impact on the overall health and wellness of all members of the Lynchburg Fire Department, uniformed and civilian. Just last week, Captain Collins was recognized by the Optimist Club of Lynchburg as their Firefighter of the Year for her work in all the areas just mentioned. Fire Chief Greg Worms recalls her "an incredibly passionate advocate for the health and wellness of the fire department team." Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in offering our congratulations to Captain Jennifer Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. Really, I was just humbled by receiving this award. There are many people who advocate for and work really hard for the well-being of our firefighters. It's just an honor for me to be able to serve as support for our department in this way. Thank you for your continued support as well, and thank you for taking the time to recognize me.
Okay. Ms. Leila Abdu-Salaam is a member of our Mayor's Youth Council and is a junior this year at Heritage High School. Leila, oh, there she is, yes. We're looking forward to working with you. Thank you for coming. We were unable to get to our second item in closed session tonight, so if council could reach a consensus, I would like to amend our agenda to include the second items. We all agree to adding the consideration of a closed meeting to discuss the potential resolution of a pending city law enforcement lawsuit pursuant to Sections 2.2-3711A7 and A8 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. Yes? Okay, we have a consensus? Great, thank you. All right, moving on. Tonight's city council agenda is divided into three sections: consent agenda, public hearing, and public comment. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Let's cast our vote. Our next section is public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Procedure: Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to council for deliberation. Moving on to Agenda Number Five: Consideration of Adopting a Resolution Approving the Community Development Block Grant (CDBG) and Home Program Goals for Fiscal Year 2024/Program Year 2023 Annual Action Plan. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request by Ms. Melva Walker.
Good evening, Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor for Aldi, and Members of City Council. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to, like she said, to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year '24/Program Year '23 Community Development Block Grant and Home Program Goals for the development of the fiscal year '24/Program Year 2023 Annual Action Plan. The Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that we hold a public hearing each year to review the goals in the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan. Tonight's public hearing will provide citizens and other interested parties an opportunity to comment on the goals. A 15-day public comment period to receive the citizen input regarding the goals was initiated on December 23, 2022 through a legal notice published in the news in advance. And here are the housing goals that I've provided to you in your agenda package and
Is there anyone here? Oh, thank you, Ms. Walker, sorry. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? No? Okay. Public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion?
You know, we met with the CMR to see that committee as well. We reviewed the goals for our community and includes various partners from our community in all the CDAC goals and the work that they're doing on CDBG. We're so thankful for the work that Ms. Walker's team does in our community and also the community partners to make sure we're addressing goals such as homelessness, such as so many purchasing homes for persons, housing situations, help with housing, and various other areas that CDBG funds support. So we're thankful to be a part of that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'd like to cast our vote. Great. Wonderful. Okay, Agenda Item Number Six: Consideration of a Resolution That Would Amend the Future Land Use Map, or FLUM, and an Ordinance That Would Rezone 615, 619, 623, and 651 Leesville Road to Allow the Construction of 119 Town Homes and Associated Parking. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. We have Ms. Rachel Freshheisen.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Bob Connor, Inc. is petitioning to rezone these properties from R1 Low Density Residential District to NB1C Limited Business District Conditional to R4C High Density Residential Conditional, and also to amend the Future Land Use Map from Low Density Residential to High Density Residential, which would allow the construction of 119 townhomes. The Future Land Use Map recommends institution and neighborhood commercial uses for the area where the access road is located. The Future Land Use Map recommends low-density residential and resource conservation areas for 619 and 651 Leesville Road, which is the area where the townhomes would be built. Low-density residential areas are dominated by single-family detached housing at densities of up to four dwelling units per acre. The petition proposes to amend the FLUM from Low Density Residential to High Density Residential, and these areas are characterized by higher-density townhome developments or multifamily housing at densities of up to 30 units per acre. Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding this item at their meeting on November 9 and recommended denial of the petition. After the Planning Commission public hearing, the petitioner held their own neighborhood meeting, and then they submitted several proffers as outlined in your agenda summary as a result of neighborhood feedback. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak in favor? Oh, actually, the petitioner would like to make a presentation, sorry.
Hello, I'm Trent Warner. I'm an engineer with Hurt &amp; Profit, and I'm representing the developers here, Bob Connor, Inc., along with his partners. I'd like to first start by saying welcome to the new faces that I see here. Madam Mayor, you have some great shoes to fill. It's been a good run for me in coming in here, and it's always a little nervous seeing new faces and building that relationship again. And Mr. Hugson, thanks for coming to our neighborhood meeting. That's very good. It helped us tremendously listening to the neighbors. We probably should have done that before Planning Commission meeting. It helped us develop the proffers. But I wanted to go through the presentation here of what we've done. On the screen is something that you don't have in your packet, but if you notice the big blue that goes down the middle, there's a pink color, if you will, that's right in the middle. That's where Victory Church is. They're the ones selling us the land. It's been there a while, undeveloped, or undeveloped forever, really. The development has always, it's been along Leesville Road, and if you'll notice the colors, there's a light yellow, that's the R1. That's what our current zoning is, and we would like to move that to an R4 conditional zoning for our townhomes. The reason, and honestly, just to let you know, anytime we do development, we'd love to do by right. So we would love to have made this an R1 and just moved along. However, if you look at the layout, the terrain, the site features keeps us from really doing that and making it affordable. There would be two roads connected, and I'll show you that in just a second, but the big blue swath that you see that goes through the middle of the property is the stream and the floodplain. So without being able to fill in the floodplain or going across it reasonably, then we would end up with two separate roads, and I'll show you that in a minute. The best way we thought we could make this is to rezone it to R4 with the condition that it looks like the layout of the townhomes, the 119 units. The 78 units that we got from single-family just doesn't work. If you look at Leesville Road, if you look at all the other colors, it's been pretty much moved to an R3, R4, or B1 corridor. And in fact, if you look at what's R1 now, it's not your traditional single-family suburbia. Much of it, in fact, as we looked, more than half of it has already turned into rental properties. We just believe that, looking at the layout, looking at the terrain, R1 just doesn't work, and let's find something that can work, and that's what we put together here. If you notice in your package, you'll see, and we sent this a little bit earlier so you could look, and this is what we didn't do a good enough job of laying it out for the neighbors. But on the left is our development, and that shows the townhouse development that we showed the Planning Commission. What you'll notice is the townhouses are near Leesville Road. The floodplain is down below, is in that corridor. On the opposite side of that is developable land, but for us to do R1, even with the cluster development, which is a great ordinance, by the way, it's really helped develop single-family in Lynchburg, but for us to do that, we only ended up with 78 units. And for us to do that, we also had to go to the Vista Acres subdivision and put single-family homes in their backyards. And I think if you look at the rezoning, the R2 that was just done, we heard from the people that came, there was a little bit of an outcry about what was done there, and we would not want to rezone that to R2 in the future to do what they've done. So what we've actually proffered is to keep that as undevelopable land. So in the event of just mass development, we've tried to stay away from that. So we've actually proffered to keep half our property undeveloped. So we will not develop on the other side near Grove or Vista Acres. The neighborhood meeting, another thing that came out of that was we were going to show trails going around through that as an amenity for our development, and they asked us not to do that. They did not want to bring trails near their yards. So we've actually proffered that, too. And I'd just like to say, I'm sure there's some things that I've missed here, but I think you'll find you're going to make tough decisions here in that seat, and most of the time, you'll have neighbors speaking against us, and I'm used to that. This is one of the few developments that we've done after we've explained it and had people call in and go to their doors, and you'll see a list in the proffers of people that have supported the project, that you'll hear that tonight, that people are actually supporting the projects that are around us. So I think we've done the extra mile to make this a hard decision for you not to turn down. So appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Warner, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Go ahead. Would you please state your name and locality, please?
My name is Tannis Smith, and I reside at 1233 Grove Road in Vista Acres subdivision. My house would be right on the cul-de-sac of the R1 zoning with the little pigtail out there. Myself and my neighbor, we're in favor of the townhomes, and the reason is if they go with the R1, there's 25 houses on that one road that would dump onto Grove Road, which is, in my math, 50 additional cars coming through our neighborhood. Now, if any of you have been through Vista Acres, other than Marty, the roads in there are not really wide enough. People are parking on the streets, and sometimes it's not wide enough to get a school bus through or a fire truck. With the way that they park, they won't park in their yard because they don't want to get their tires muddy. So they park on the street, and you have to zigzag through. So I myself, I'm in favor of the multifamily housing only because of traffic issues. Other than that, that's all my concern is. I like the idea of the nature preserve, too. I've lived in that neighborhood since 1976, so I'm kind of used to all those streets in my backyard, and if they put that street in, nothing, it's all gone. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else in favor? Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Please state your name and locality.
Timothy Santiago, Lynchburg City, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I speak in opposition because of the sole thing, that traffic in that area is already congested. After looking at what Hurt &amp; Profit has proposed, it really wouldn't make it any better. I was biking down that road just last week. Leesville Road is challenging enough, as is during a busy time, it would only get busier. If 100 and some, I can't remember the exact number, sorry, but 100 and some homes, if you average one to two, just two cars per dwelling, that's going to be over 200 extra vehicles come rush hour, whether they're going to and from work, picking kids up from school, after-school activities. That many more cars just for that. So how do we justify putting that much traffic in an already congested area when the road isn't really wide enough, in my opinion, to support it and to support it safely? If we can't support something safely, maybe we should widen the road first. I'm going to oppose anything that the city wants to put in that area in O2 just because we need better infrastructure. This council has said it before, well, the former council said it before, and I agree that we need to look at, can we handle this before we continue? We're just piling, 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 and all those families that move there are going to be going to Heritage. I take it Heritage can take a small influx of students, but it'll set a precedent to continue to do so. So I just ask this council to vote against this on the idea of the infrastructure does not support it, and with that being said, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Santiago. Any phone calls or emails from citizens?
There are none.
None? Would you like to give a rebuttal? You have five minutes to make your rebuttal, by the way.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Madam Mayor, I apologize for interjecting. I didn't hear whether there may have been some additional opposition, just in case.
Oh, was there any additional opposition? I'm so sorry. Anyone else? No? Okay, now you may give your rebuttal. And you still have, oh, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
We are opposition.
You do? Okay, sorry. Sit back down, please come forward. I apologize.
I'm opposed.
Okay, please state your name and locality, please.
Charmaine Davis.
Okay.
Temple Circle in Lynchburg. Okay, I'm opposed to it because, just as the gentleman before me said about the infrastructure. Okay, I have had, now on the seventh child, go into Heritage High School. I have talked to the principal, Mr. Beatty, the city, the school council, the superintendent of schools. I have emailed my ward folks, all of that, and about the traffic situation at Heritage in the morning. And I'm telling you, there are near-death experiences every morning, because I take my daughter to school every morning because the bus schedule is unreliable, okay? You don't know when the bus is coming, so I just take her to school because we're three minutes from the high school. And there's no, there's people coming in from Timberlake trying to get onto Ward's Ferry, people trying to get to work, people trying to get into the school, people trying to get out of the school, there's no flow. There's one teacher there in front of the cafeteria where the students are dropped off at the parking lot, and all he does is just wave people through. That is crazy, okay? And I have invited other people to come up to the school, even WSCT, nobody contacted me back about the situation, that somebody's going to get killed there. And the only time I believe anything is going to be done is when somebody is, because we have children who are crossing the road, Ward's Ferry Road, from the townhouses there, Watergate and the other ones, to go across the road unprotected, undirected, and just like the gentleman said before, there's no infrastructure. Until that happens, I don't think we should have any more buildings going up until the roads are made safe for our students, because just, is my timer up?
Thirty seconds.
But anyway, I'm against it, because until you do something about the traffic situation that we already have at Heritage High School, I'm totally against it. Something needs to be done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Anyone else in opposition? No? Okay, now you may come present your rebuttal.
Thank you very much. What I'd like to say is a few things, and I probably should have done it in the beginning. We did do a traffic study with the actual layout that we have with the townhomes. Leesville Road is interesting. It's already four lanes wide, so in order to do any type of turn lane, you'd end up having to take right-of-way to do it. So our traffic study, what it did was recommend, the way it sort of read was, there's an issue with Leesville Road having four lanes of open traffic, but it is for all along the whole corridor. So there's really nothing different that our project would add to Leesville Road, but it's not to say nothing can go in there. So if you did single-family, the same issue is going to happen. So anytime you add something to it, it tells you that you need to do a left-turn lane. Simon's Run, that little road that the city built in there is also needing a left-turn lane that was not built because of the same issue. So what we've done, and what we've proffered is, and to make things a little bit safer for you, and I'm sorry, Mr. Santiago, is we are offering a right-in, right-out. So it's a nuisance for our homeowners. However, they know once they've bought it, once you get to a system, you need to come from the Greenview Drive side to come into the development. So it would be right-in and right-out only, not turning left, Leesville Road, and we actually think that's a safer condition for our clients, for our homes. And a couple other things that I did not mention, one thing that we also looked at when we were doing single-family, and I'm sorry I skipped this, but there is an infrastructure cost, and just to let you know to the city, the advantage of doing the townhomes is the roads, the interior are private. Single-family, the city does a reimbursement, and to do those two streets that you see on that side is about $525,000 in reimbursements. So it's a cost to the city to do that as well, so I wanted to make sure I threw that in. And as far as, and I'm sorry, Mrs. Davis, as what she discussed, Ward's Ferry Road is an issue, there's no doubt about it, but to do the two streets that we show for single-family on the side because of the floodplain splitting it off, that actually is going to add about 40 homes on towards Ferry Road. So this development and doing it on the Leesville roadside is actually also a plus. So I just wanted to bring that back in that response. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, good question.
I'm going to close the public hearing now, and the matter rests with council. Do I have a motion?
And if he had a question first, then I'll make a motion if you'd rather, but I can make a motion now.
Can we start a discussion now?
I'll make a motion that would deny the Future Land Use Map. Request change.
Okay.
I'll second Councilmember Hugson's motion.
And what I'll say on that is the fact that, you know, as mentioned by Rachel Freshheisen, and I appreciate all the work that's done on this project, but the biggest issue, it goes from low-density residential on the FLUM, low-density to high-density. So I think there's enough overcrowding of land, so the first item is the Future Land Use Map, which the motion is for denial. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'll be opposing the change in Future Land Use Map, and what it really comes down to is the multifamily dwellings pose a much higher risk to our firefighters and our fire-suppression capabilities. They're a much higher target hazard, and until this city gets an additional ladder truck to be able to support additional multifamily complexes, we need to make sure we can protect our citizens, and we just don't have the public safety resources for another multifamily complex in that side of town.
Any other discussion? Vice Mayor for Aldi?
Just want to note for the record, I've met with the developers and attempted greatly to meet with other interested parties. Apologize for my schedule and being able to connect with everyone, but just so everyone knows, I've had discussions. But I do give great deference to the Ward III representative with this and understanding his representative history of that area, and want to respect his desires and needs for representing those who live in that area. And I want, I hope I also get the results that you were asking for, and the city manager poked it over, I forget her name, I forget me, but.
I went over and then I made sure that I had. Deputy city manager. Just make sure that they connect.
Yep, and whatever we can do on that front, I'd love to know, too. But thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other discussion? Yes, Councilmember Dolan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a question. What can be done with that property by right? Mr. Martin?
As the R1 property currently stands, it is pretty limited to single-family development. You could do something like an owner-occupied duplex, like a mother-in-law suite, that sort of thing, but the density can't go higher than single-family.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, I just had a question for.
Madam Mayor, I just had a question for making the record clear. Is the motion to deny both?
No.
The ordinance and the resolution?
No, Mr. City Attorney, ignore what we've got. Since there are two separate resolutions, we always separate those, historically is what we've done. And so the first motion is the ordinance before us, Resolution Number R23, and that is what I'm making, my motion was to rec, for denial of changing the flume. After this is done, then we'll come to the second one, as the mayor leads. Thank you.
Okay. So any more discussion? Call to vote? Oh. Okay, now we go back to the second item, which, which one? Yes, go ahead.
Okay, and now on the second item, that's actually the rezoning from R1 to R4, and I, I'm very grateful for what the developers did. I mean, it's, it was a lot, as I told them, it's a lot better than what I thought. I mean, it's, it's, you know, when you see an R1 to an R4, it's just, it's not good for the neighborhood. I mean, where it can be developed, the, the developers went the extra mile by really trying to figure out a way that they could do this. Unfortunately, I realize that cramming, you know, the more density into an area that's R1 has a negative effect on not just this property, but the next property and the next property. And I think, you know, we just have to look at the overcrowding of the land, and I hope that the, the R1 and the single-family homes can be built there on both levels as presented by right. I think that is a fantastic issue. You know, a while back, we denied, I know this is different, these are townhomes, but we denied some apartments, and shortly after, single-family homes are built, and man, they came up nice. Oh, the neighbors loved them. They're beautiful houses. I hope that can happen here. So I make a motion that we deny the rezoning.
Second?
Second.
Nothing else to add, thank you.
Any discussion? Okay, call to vote?
Did, did she?
Wait, I want to. Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to agree with you, sorry. Can we revote? I'm sorry. Yes. Sorry, can we call to vote again? Yeah. Okay, let's do that again. Can we please call to vote? Yes. All right, thank you.
Motion passes.
Motion, thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item number seven. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as part of the City of Lynchburg's comprehensive plan for 2013 to 2030. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Rachel Freshheisen, once again.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Master Plan was presented to City Council at its work session on December 13th, 2022. The planning commission held a public hearing on December 14th, 2022, and recommended that this plan be adopted as part of the city's comprehensive plan. The Parks and Rec Master Plan has been a tremendous effort by our Parks and Recreation Department over the past two years. I don't know who all is in the shadows back there, but we have a number of park staff, and we just want to give them a shout out for what, everything that has gone into this plan. They put a lot of effort, especially into the community outreach phase of the project, and I believe they have participation from almost 4,000 citizens, which is amazing, impressive. The result of all that is this master plan, which creates a clear vision for the future as well as goals and objectives for Lynchburg's park system. While the plan sets the vision, it's a working and flexible document that staff would implement over time using various funding sources. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer questions after the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like?
Madam Mayor, if I may.
You may, go ahead.
Prior to the public hearing, if I may interject briefly, just since we have three new members, I was going to ask if, if council will be willing to extend the public hearing to another, just one more meeting. That way, everyone can have an opportunity to read the multi-hundred-page document if they really want to, just so that we can candidly say that everyone's had the full opportunity to read it. That would just be my request.
Okay, do we need to make a motion for that?
No, necessarily.
Okay, would we like to do another public, do a public hearing?
So it sounds like the.
Continue.
Council can open the public hearing, hear who's here tonight, and then it will be extended to be continued into the next hearing on the 24th.
So let's go ahead and listen to who's here?
Yes.
Okay. So who would like to speak in favor?
Timothy Santiago, Lynchburg City. Our parks are a treasure to us. Anything from Blackwater Creek Trail, Percival Island, oh, I can't, I can't even name them all, but Peaks View, just some of the few things that we have to offer as a great city. So any type of development that we can pour into it to make it better for everyone to enjoy, not just the people that live near, but eight, all eighty-some thousand people that live here, I heard them say, I think, 4,000 or two, two or 3,000 people participated. I would enjoy seeing everybody one day participate in developing our parks because they are truly something for all of us, whether it be basketball, disc golf, just going out for a walk, and as I do every now and then, just sit and watch traffic because it's entertaining. But I just ask this council to, when it does vote, vote in a way that will help better our city, it help us to continue to grow in a way that we not only want, but also need. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Santiago. Anyone else speaking in favor? Yes? Please state your name and locality.
Hi, my name's Nathan Wyand. I live in the second ward, second precinct. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed Parks and Rec Master Plan, particularly the section about trails and greenways. The plan describes an inner loop and an outer loop of paved trails connecting most, most large parks in the city. You might say, that's great. Citizens have expressed a desire for more recreation trails, so we'll be expanding the trail system. But this is so much more. If this plan is approved, Lynchburg will be building a transportation system. I've begun to think of the inner loop in this plan as 501 for bikes. Not only will it provide more opportunities for physical activity, but it will, it will connect parts of the city that have been inaccessible to cyclists for over a century, since the advent of the automobile. Imagine for a moment a young resident of Tinbridge Hill that secures a job at BWXT, Frido Lay, or one of the other businesses in the Ivy Creek Industrial Park. They're currently unable to afford a car, and the bus system doesn't accommodate their schedule. With a hundred-dollar bike, they could commute to work each day and get some exercise on the way. Another example, a family in the Sandusky neighborhood wants to go out for breakfast downtown on a beautiful Saturday morning. In the past, driving was the only safe way to get from their neighborhood to Main Street. But now, the trail loop passes right by their house. They decide to take the trip on their bikes, saving money and reducing stress on the road system while zipping along forest-lined trails. This is the kind of city I want to live in, so I ask that you vote to approve the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Very well-written, by the way. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Yes?
Hey, everybody. Brandon Jones, on Gray Street from, near Florida Avenue. I really like the way that the development of the parks has really been going as it is. I enjoy going to that waterfall a lot. I also enjoy, was it Riverside Park, where they've built it up, it's got the nice, you know, water thing. That's all nice. I wish we could see more of that at, like, Miller Park, things like that. It's wonderful. I enjoy sitting in, in Miller Park very often and just watching the animals and other people. I also go to the swimming pool when they do it. It's fantastic. I enjoy everything that the city has been doing, and y'all are doing an amazing job. I appreciate it all. It's wonderful. I like going through the bike trails and all. The way that the city has developed everything is fantastic, and I hope that it continues. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Lynchburg City Council. My name's Andrew Glover. I am in Ward Four. First off, I love our Parks and Rec Department. My family uses them on an almost weekly basis. One of the challenges that my family has, however, is that to get to a major park, or to get to really any park, we've got to drive 15, 20 minutes, because right now in Ward Four, there is a legitimate Parks and Rec desert. There is no parks or recreation facility other than a very overgrown heritage park that is anywhere accessible to Ward Four. And while there is a ton of great ideas and concepts in the master plan, the master plan identifies that desert, but fails to do anything for Ward Four. And I just see it as a major oversight, given that this is the document that you're supposed to use for the next 10 years to influence where you put your priorities. Ward Four is one of the fastest-growing areas of the city, and if you don't address Parks and Rec facilities now, you're not going to have land to actually put those in. And so I, I'm thankful for extending this public hearing, and I'm hoping that you can come up with solutions, but as it stands now, this leaves all of Ward Four out, with the exception of some minor updates, basically clearing out Heritage Park, but there's no, no description of what that actually looks like in the plan. The other thing that I kind of want to express, express is that I'm an avid mountain biker and, and biker, and I appreciate the comments regarding some of the, the greenways and the trails. Lynchburg has, has a lot of those greenways and those pathways, right? There, you have Blackwater Creek that extends all the way downtown into Percival Island. You've got Ivy Creek. We have loads of trails. Building greenways is expensive. There's, it takes a lot of money to build those tiny, kind of greenways. And while it's great to say you're connecting those trails, you're, I'm wondering how much additional use they're going to get for the cost that's involved. And I just, the cost in to connect these trails is one of the biggest items in this budget, and how many people are really going to take use of that, especially given we already have fantastic greenways? So certainly, I, I was on Blackwater Creek not too long ago, like this, one or two weeks ago. That needs to be, be paved and stuff, and let's focus on that rather than spending absorbent amounts of money trying to connect trails that, yes, maybe you can ride your bike to Sandusky to get a, a breakfast sandwich, but how many people are going to really, truly be doing that? So it's just one concern is, I think that you could better utilize that money. So those are my two concerns. Ward Four, there's nothing done for it, and then kind of, can we use the money better to economic development? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Any other opposition? No? Okay, any emails or calls from citizens?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I have one letter to share with you all. It reads, "To the Honorable Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Faraldi, and other esteemed members of Lynchburg City Council, this letter is to support approval for the Lynchburg Parks and Rec Master Plan. My special interest is the recommendation that park maintenance be moved from Public Works to Parks and Rec Department. The change would allow both departments better control of their workflow. It also allows parks to address the problems of blocked trails, down trees, and other problems more quickly. It would also free up Public Works employees to deal with many and more urgent requests that are their responsibilities. I speak not only as a citizen and property owner who uses the parks and trails regularly, but also a member of the Friends of Lynchburg Parks and Rec. Thank you for consideration, and that comes to you from Marilyn Martin."
Thank you very much. Okay, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council.
Oh. Just a quick question, if I may. I think Vice Mayor Faraldi wanted to keep the, before you close it, to keep it open. Maybe we can pause it tonight, and we can kind of discuss, and then allow more comment next week with our next meeting? Would that be?
So it sounds like there's consensus to keep, keep it open and to move it until January 24th to be reheard again, and then consider the resolution after it's concluded.
Do we have a consensus for that? Okay, so move to the 24th. Yes. Is that good? Okay, great, thank you so much. All right, the next section is public comment. During public comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, city council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. We have, we're going to hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Mr. Brandon Jones.
Hello, everybody. I come here to ask you for help, not just for myself, but for the citizens of the city. We need help because there are things that are going on in this city that aren't really being looked at, and I'm talking illegal activities, drugs, and other things like that. And I'm wondering if there was any way that we can encourage or help our police department in any way to be able to look into things that, they say that aren't really high priority, but they're still crimes, because they're, you know, happening on our streets every day, and everybody can see them. And, you know, going and coming from work, I see this many, many times a day, and it's mostly in the Park Avenue area, you know, from train station up to Floyd Street area. And you'll see, you know, right many people standing around, and, you know, they're doing things they shouldn't be doing, drug activity and other things with cars. And I report this stuff a lot, and I don't see many things that are going on, and I'm hoping that somebody can help, you know, find a solution in dealing with this. A lot of the times, they say that, you know, they're dealing with high priority things, such as the shootings, and I realize there's been a lot of shootings that's going on in the city, or domestic assaults, violence, things like that. But still, the street-level crimes are still a crime, and all I'm asking for is a little help and finding a way to be able to deal with that, too. I appreciate y'all's time and effort in this, and y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, and next we have a citizen regarding a matter, Mr. Timothy Santiago.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. First, I just want to say I hope that while my speech for the first time is written out and will try to convey what I'm saying, I just hope I can speak with the passion that Mr. Jones just had for this city, because he's right in so many areas. But tonight, I want to talk to you about our public transportation system and the failure that it is. The past five times I've went into the bus station, and no pattern to the days I've chosen to go in there, but just, sorry, now six, because I went in there yesterday, our buses are running on smaller schedules, or they're just canceling certain buses. These buses include Routes Four servicing Ward Road, Liberty University, and an incredible amount of jobs. The Routes, Routes Nine, Ten, which service a lot of residential areas, the mall, the closer to the hospital, and also the DMV. And you also have the One Buses that serves a lot of low-income neighborhoods, Darrington, the hospital, and parts of downtown. All of these buses are some of the most-used buses, but we're seeing them get cut first. And sometimes the Four Bus is the most important bus that feeds the lifeline of the city, and that's Ward Road. Or we're seeing buses that, a literal lifeline, the hospital, all of a sudden cut early in the day, causing more people not to be able to go either to work or have to spend money out of their pocket after they've already bought a bus pass for the month. So now they have to pay for an Uber, a taxi, or some random friend to take them to work, which is going to take more money from their pocket. And if they don't have that money, they risk loss of employment, and loss of employment comes with a whole nother, a whole nother issue, including poverty. And with poverty comes a whole nother set of issues, which include higher crime rates, because it will breed desperation. I was recently talking with an individual that wanted to bring business here to the city, and the first com-
We now have someone here from a group representative regarding a concern, Mr. Kurt Deemer. Are you still here? Yes?
Yes, my name is Kurt Deemer, and I'm speaking on behalf of my group, Let's Make Lynchburg a Second Amendment Sanctuary. And I'm here to thank y'all, and y'all have already done what I planned on speaking to do. So I would like to take a moment to, because no man does something by himself. And this petition has had a long road, but here we are, and it's never too late to do the right thing, and thank you, council, for doing the right thing. I'd like to thank Jeff Helgeson, first off, for introducing the original resolution that got this all started. That was, that was you, and you deserve credit. My leadership team included people who are here tonight. If you want to stand up when I call your name, please do. Chris Sheridan, Marty Mizgens, Delia Wendell Walker, Ryan Thomas, Ben Summers, Isaiah Knight, Wes Gardner, A.J. Richards, Keyshawn Jackson, Phil Van Cleve, my beautiful wife, Angie Deemer, and Mike Graham, and Larry Doughty from WLNI. Anyway, nobody wants to take credit? I see, that's fine. That's, that's the kind of people you want on your team, that aren't trying to take credit for everything. And that's, if you don't mind not getting credit, it's amazing what you can accomplish, guys. That was Ronald Reagan. But most of all, I'd like to thank God, because nothing important really happens without his help. This has not been a thing that's just men efforts. This was men, women on my team, but this was a God thing. This is not a Republican, a Democrat thing. This is not a red-and-blue thing. It never was. We had a petition on change.org, and I would like to present it to council. Can I give it to the city manager? We had three thousand-plus people sign that. There are 20,000 gun owners in the city of Lynchburg that you represent, and they don't all come to city meetings, they don't all speak out, but they are in your districts. And that's a lot of people, and, and they are law-abiding citizens. And if this, there was a gun problem with those folks, you would know it. That is not the problem. We are not the problem. We are the law-abiding citizens, and we want to be empowered. And I heard that from the candidates this time, and this takes a major step toward empowering the citizens of Lynchburg, and I am very much appreciative of it and very thankful of, of the step you've taken. Public safety is everybody's business, but public keeping themselves safe is the start of that. And when, when a father buys a gun to protect his home, he is conducting public safety business, okay? This is not a Republican, Democrat. The state has recognized this with their Department of Criminal Justice series of program where they train people to be civilian care responders. They call it immediate responders. We've all heard of first responders, but they've come up with a term called immediate responders. And everybody in this room, and everybody in this city is, whether they like it or not, an immediate responder. And that means you're the first ones there when a crime takes place. If it's your house, if it's your neighborhood, you'll be there long before the police or the fire. And you can not only stop the crime, but you can also help the wounded and protect the victims. So if we love our neighbor, seems like a great thing to do, and we are supposed to love our neighbor. I put a small little gift up there for everybody. I think you saw a copy on the dais. Everybody gets one. I know some already had one, and I know who those gentlemen are. But this is a short read, a lot shorter than the Parks and Rec budget, so I would recommend it, and you can get through it in about ten minutes. But this is the preeminent law of the land, as Ms. Dolan said. This is the law that is over the state, over the federal government. This, this is over it all. Read it, learn it, practice it, protect it, support it. When the resolution comes before you, asking you to support one of the amendments, you can support the Constitution by supporting that resolution. Words mean things. General Assembly passes thousands of resolutions a year. They do it because what y'all say matters, and you're sending a message. And passing this resolution today sent a message to the criminals. I've said for a long time that if we are not a Second Amendment sanctuary, then we're a sanctuary for criminals. And unfortunately, I hated it, but it became a prophecy. And though over the last four or five years, it has been bad for a lot of people in the city, especially in certain parts. And this is a good step to sending a message to the criminals that we're not a sanctuary for criminals, we're a sanctuary for law-abiding citizens and their ability to protect themselves. So I will be holding you to your oaths, as everybody knows. I've been doing that for quite a while. It's what I do. My new hobby may be to have more fair and transparent elections, so maybe I'll leave y'all alone, unless it has to do with that. But remember, guns do save lives. If you want to do the right thing, keep, keep doing the things you're doing. I'll pray for, for you. I thank God for what, what happened today. I think it's a good signal that you sent, and I would just like to really thank each and every one of you for supporting the Second Amendment Sanctuary and finally giving us our sanctuary.
Thank you. And lastly, we will hear from a citizen regarding a concern, Mr. Isaiah Knight.
Good evening. I'm Isaiah Knight. I'm in Forest. I'm representing Virginia Families PAC, but I don't need five minutes, just was here quickly. Originally, I wasn't going to come because I saw you guys vote for the Second Amendment resolution, and I am still very thankful for that. And then immediately after that, I see a fourth, three vote against immediate tax relief for our folks here. You know, one of the cool things about the Second Amendment resolution is the unity from all of these friends who are here. We've been sticking together about public safety. We've been unified for the rights of the folks who are here. We've been unified about all of the amendments, been unified about making sure that our families have tax relief. And we worked hard those two years to make sure that we could have a Republican supermajority up here, and we do. We worked hard for this. We put our money into it, we time, our treasure, because we believe in it. We want our families to be safe. We want to make sure that every penny that we have is, is as much as possible within our pockets. And then I see two Republicans side with two Democrats when we fought so hard to prevent We worked for unity, unity, to make sure that's not going to happen, and I cannot begin to tell you how disappointed I am in not seeing immediate tax relief being every single one of those Republicans. Some of us weren't here two years ago when we were fighting for this. I want to share once again what the spirit of that Second Amendment resolution was, and that was unity.
Thank you. Next item is consideration of a closed meeting. Consideration of closed meeting to discuss the potential resolution of a pending city law enforcement lawsuit pursuant to the section 2.23711A7 and S.A.8 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. Do I have a motion to go in closed meeting?
Second.
Okay. We are now in closed meeting.